Time is 6:00 PM, Council and City of Dennison now convenes into regular session. Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Dean Emerson from New Beginnings.
Would you join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, we give you praise, we give you thanks. We thank you for this city. We thank you, Father, for these city leaders. We thank you, Father, for this meeting and the opportunity that we have, oh God, to make sure that this city is the best it can be. We pray, God, your blessing upon our meeting. We pray the peace of God over us. We ask your presence here. And we pray, Father, that all is done. We glorify you in your name. So, Lord, be with us, direct us, and guide us tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have one proclamation presentation this evening. First one will be the proclamation on Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I think we have Martha Nuttles here with us today, Executive Director of Grayson County's Child Children's Agency. Do you have any comments, of course?
Yes, please. I would like to. First, thank you for allowing me to be here. I very much appreciate it. Child abuse is a problem that continues to grow unfortunately, and as our community grows, so do the number of children being abused in our community. I'd like to thank our partners because if we could do this by ourselves, we work with a number of different agencies, including Dennison PD. And in that sense, I would ask that all of you join us in that part of this abuse. I'd like to leave you some on bands and some ribbons. And think about it throughout the month. Blue signifies the bruised child. And if someone stops you and asks you about the band, be able to tell them that it's a problem in our community and everyone needs to be able to address it. Thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening. We do have a proclamation that I'll proclaim now. So whereas more than 66,000 cases of child abuse neglect were confirmed in Texas during the fiscal year of 2015, and whereas child abuse prevention in our community is responsibility, providing solutions depends on involvement among many people, and whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships all throughout the community, and whereas everyone in this community should become more aware of child abuse prevention and considering helping parents raise their children in a safe nurturing environment, as well as supporting local professionals dedicated to meeting those needs of child abuse victims. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Jared Johnson, Mayor of the City of Dennison, and entire city council do hereby proclaim the month of April 2016 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Dennison, and encourage all citizens to work together to reduce child abuse neglect in our community.
Thank you.
Okay, and also, we have our own, very own Parks Director to talk about an April initiative for the city.
Yes. Let me see. It's wonderful. Okay. If you can do it.
Other way.
Okay. So, in our first effort to revitalize our Keep Dennison Beautiful program, we are participating in the Great American Cleanup, sponsored by Keep America Beautiful. April is also the month that Public Works offers our curbside cleanup throughout town. We started it on Friday with the volunteer staff lunchtime cleanup. And then we, later that afternoon, Coach Rogers, along with his staff and about 130 athletes from the school, helped downtown for about two hours. They did a tremendous job. And then on Saturday, April 9th, we are hosting the Don't Mess with Texas Trash Off. We're going to meet in Forest Park from 9:00 to 11:00, and we're just going to spread out and try to pick all that up. And as you can see from the pictures, we had lots of turnout. They were all over downtown, I think four blocks. You can see our very own up there in the right corner, Fearless Leader up there. He did a great job on Friday as well. We had about 15 people that volunteered through their lunch break, and we're just really excited to be kicking things off and adopting this for April.
Okay, and the theme for the month is?
Moving Forward, Kicking Trash.
Very good. Well, thank you, Sunny, for relating now, and certainly the council's support of that initiative. I know we allow activities planned, as you mentioned. It's a great opportunity to create awareness, which makes really the charge. Okay, agenda item number three, the consent agenda. I think we need a motion to remove 3C from the consent.
Yes, I make a motion to remove item C to have further discussion and make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A and B.
Second.
Have motion from Councilman Dex, say it from Councilmember Gott, all of everybody saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like a sign. Motion carries. Will now go to item number 3C.
Mr. Mayor, I need to recuse myself from this vote.
Okay. As the record show, that Councilmember Gott has refused herself from the discussion and the vote, and will not be in the room for discussions on this agenda item. Council has before you in our packets, this was only consent agenda, it's just a natural annual bid process. Does the Director have anything to add to that?
We'll add that we added some additional right-of-way maintenance to this contract, and so we're really hoping that our Parks folks can focus on parks instead of going rights-of-way, and so this contract does include that. That's the only thing I'd hope.
Make a motion to approve the contract with SF Landscaping on item C. Second.
Have a motion from Councilman Dex, say it from Councilman Albert, all of everybody saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like a sign. Motion carries. The record show that Councilmember Gott's joined the council. Agenda item number four, public hearings on unsafe structures. This is for...
On January 25th, 2016, Dela Efer and Do Yan Efer were given notice of violation to repair or demolish the structure at 1208 Martin Mizer Keen. The owners have failed to comply with the notice. The structure is unsafe and a potential fire hazard. You can see that this property has some foundation issues. It also has some roof issues. This is a picture from the inside. Our record of violations, notices and unsafe conditions of the property are on file in the building department. On January 25th, 2016, Aranga Reese and Kenneth Dallow Reese were given notice of violation to repair or demolish the structure at 1042 West Baker. I did want to let you know that in March, we, just in a random check, the county took this over for taxes. So we did send a notice to the county notifying them of this meeting on March the 9th. I'll go on through with the pictures and see if it's okay to continue on with the process. These pictures are from within. You can tell that this is a roof lane. The roof is in pretty bad shape. This property is open. It's an attractive nuisance. The foundation is poor on this property. On January 25th, 2016, Odella Parker and Lamont Parker were given notice of violation to repair or demolish the structure at 2920 South Woodland. The owners have failed to comply with the notice. The structure is unsafe and a potential fire hazard. This house has a lot of problems with the foundation, with the roof. It's certainly not weather tight. Our record of violations, notices and unsafe conditions of the property are on file in the building department. And that's already accounted for.
This is public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to any of these three properties? There being none of the public hearings closed. So my question on the one on the Baker Street, is the county now owns that property?
Yes.
Have we reached out to anyone there besides sending the letter?
I talked to the code enforcement officer about that, and he said that he has called, and he has not received a call back from him regarding this property.
Okay. I would think probably it's worth another call, maybe from Judd to Judd, just to be sure that, so I guess if we can make a motion that reflects the, just to be sure, sure that the Woodlands, and also to start the discussion of, once we tear it down, how will they get us to put it as part of our whole housing program? I guess it'd be the next discussion. Judd, will you handle that?
Yes.
Motion from the council?
Make a motion to approve all the homes in on, with the 1042 West Baker, to allow staff to give notice to the county to see if there's any conflict with that issue being demolished, or that home being demolished.
And if there is, they'll bring that back for future agenda. Is that good, Julian?
Yes. Second.
Have motion from Councilman Dex, say it from Councilmember Gott, all of everybody saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like a sign. Motion carries. Agenda item 5A, Annual Audit. This way.
Yes, Mayor, Council, we're here to receive a report, hold a discussion and take action on 2014-2015 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. It's going to be presented by Mike Brooks. He's with our auditors, Brooks Cardell, out of the Woodlands. While he comes up, I want to go ahead and give recognition to two of our staff that are here today. Laurie Alsabog, she can stand up, I know she doesn't want to, she's very shy. She heads up the audit each year. She's my right-hand person, and if I didn't have her to head up the audit, I don't know where I would be twice seeing her sitting up here. But she does a great job, and she heads up the audit. And Zira Kinsey is our accountant, one of our accountants, and she also plays a major role in making sure we got our eyes and crossed our teeth. So I want to give them our recognition for helping with the audit.
Thank you. Good evening. Mayor, Council, my name is Mike Brooks, our partner with Brooks Cardell, CPAs. I also would like to thank Laurie and the accounting staff, and of course Renee, they did a great job for us this year. And audit can always be a challenge, and this is our second year on the audit, so thank for a little smoother this year and overall if it didn't went well. In front of you, you will see a copy of the city's comprehensive annual financial report. Beneath the cover page, you will see a summary presentation. I have summarized what we consider to be some of the more important statements from the caper, so I will briefly go over that and then open the floor for questions. First, I would like to point out that the city did issue a comprehensive annual financial report as opposed to an annual financial report. This means the city did go above and beyond the standard reporting requirements. The city will be submitting this caper to the GFA to receive the certificate of excellence in financial reporting, and we fully expect that the city will receive this award, and the city has received the award for how many years?
Three years.
Three years in a row? So we look forward to getting that back. The city should be proud of issuing a caper. Next. Just briefly, I want to go over the components of the comprehensive annual financial report. First, we have the letter of opinion in the middle, followed by the auditor's opinion, followed by the management's discussion and analysis, followed by the basic financial statements, which include the government-wide fund level and notes to the financial statements, then followed by the required supplementary information and statistical section. Next is a summary of the independent auditor's report. This is our auditor's opinion. We did issue a clean, unmodified opinion. That's the highest level of assurance that we can give that the financial statements are free of material misstatement, and all footnotes are disclosed. Something new this year, you will see in the auditor's opinion, is an emphasis of a matter paragraph. That's required when a new accounting standard is adopted, and the city did adopt Gatsby 68, so I just wanted to point that out to you, and we'll briefly touch on that in a moment. Several financial highlights. Total assets exceeded total liabilities by approximately $49.7 million. The city's total net position increased by $1.3 million. City's governmental funds reported combined ending fund balances of $10.6 million for a decrease of $489,000. And net pension liabilities totaled $7.3 million as of year. That includes the city's pension liability for employees, TMRS, as well as the firefighters' pension. Next is a summary of the statement of expenditures and changes in governmental fund balance. The most important number you want to look at here is your net change in your general fund and your ending fund balance for your general fund. The general fund did have a net increase in fund balance of approximately $948,000 for the year, and left with an ending fund balance of approximately $8 million. Now, of that $8 million, $6.1 million is unassigned, which is available for, data to use for a reserve. We recommend that the city do keep a minimum of 15% to 20% within reserve of annual general fund expenditures. The city's policy, I believe, is 25%?
It was, and then we changed it for this fiscal year.
Okay. The city did end with 26% within unassigned fund balance of your annual general fund expenditures, so it's certainly a healthy reserve. Next is your statement of revenues, expenditures and changes in fund balance budget to actual for your general fund. On the right-hand side, you will see your positive or negative budget variances. On the upper right, you will see that the city did have a negative revenue variance of approximately $78,000. Below that, a positive expenditure variance of $1 million. This means the city spent approximately $1 million less than budgeted, for a total net positive budget variance of $926,000. Assuming that the city was able to accomplish everything you intended to when the original and final budget was approved, and also receive positive and overall positive budget variance, it's a sign of a healthy fiscal year. Next is your schedule of revenues, expenses and changes in net position for your utility fund. This is your water and sewer and other utilities. The most important number you want to look at here is your change in net position for the year. Want to make sure it is a positive change or close to it. You just don't want to see recurring losses within your utility fund. If so, there may be an issue as far as rates. We may recommend that a rate study be performed or something be adjusted. The city did have a positive change in net position of $291,000 for the year, so no issues here. Next is a short summary of some of the primary components of Gatsby 68. This is the new accounting standard that I touched on. The gist of this accounting standard is that the city is now required to record either a net pension liability or net pension asset on the statement of net position. Previously, this had only been disclosed within the footnotes, once Gatsby 68 was effective, basically this asset or liability was transferred to the balance sheet. The way that this is being handled is primarily by TMRS. So TMRS, and for your firefighter's pension, it's going to be a little bit different, but for TMRS, they're going to go ahead and engage the actuary. They did engage Gabriel Rutter and Smith, and they're going to perform a valuation every two years and provide the city with the necessary information to be able to record these analyses. Next. I just want to briefly go over the components of your net pension liability. The net pension liability is comprised of two components. That is your total pension liability, which equals the total estimated benefit payments for current retirees and current vested employees. And you also have your statement of fiduciary net position. Now, these are the contributions that the city has made to TMRS, which have yet been paid out in benefits. Those two netted together equal your total pension liability. So this number here for the city, if you follow it from left to right, left-hand side is your total pension liability, the middle is your statement of fiduciary net position, and on the right-hand side is your net pension liability, approximately $2.8 million. This is the city's liability for TMRS. Also briefly, I just want to point out that below our summary presentation there, we do have what's called a sensitivity analysis. Now, this is required under Gatsby 68, but what it does is shows you the sensitivity of this asset or liability to changes in the discount rate. The actuaries that TMRS has hired have used a discount rate of 7%. They're estimating that over the life of the investments, it will earn approximately 7%. If that estimate was reduced to 6%, the total liability would be approximately $10 million. If it was increased to 8%, the city would have a total net pension asset of $3.4 million. Next is the same presentation, but for the firefighter's pension. You will see from left to right, the total pension liability netted with fiduciary net position, and a total net pension liability of approximately $4.5 million. So the firefighter's pension is a little bit higher than the city's pension liability. This is due to the funding percentage. The cities, for a city of this size to have a net pension liability of only $2.8 million is a good thing. We are seeing that net pension liability to be a lot higher on other similar cities. So the City of Dennison has a net funded pension of approximately 95%. That's really high. We're seeing anywhere from 80 to mid-80, somewhere in that range. Very few are as high as the city. The firefighter's pension is actually a little bit less than that. It's around 79%, which is the reason for the larger liability. That does conclude my formal presentation. You also have been provided with our standard auditor letters. This includes our management letter and our required disclosure letter. The required auditor disclosure letter does have your journal entry and gives us a chance to discuss any issues. We had no issues with the auditor, everything went very smoothly, and all the journal entries were very standard. Be happy to take any questions that you have.
Question? This is the third year that you're firm?
Second year.
Second year.
Yes.
Make a motion to the council?
Please go pray.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilmember Gott, say it from Councilman Raleigh, all of everybody saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like a sign. Motion carries. Before we go to 5B, I wanted to give Nancy, Nancy, to have a chance to come forward. I'm sorry, I realize what you were here to talk about, I would have done this earlier so you didn't have to wait.
Thanks. My own private, I'm a little familiar with board meetings and been state secretary of state organizations, I understand this a little bit. But an issue that I had at my home has been bothering me probably for a year and a half, and I spoke to Mr. Johnson, excuse me, Mayor Johnson, about it probably a year and a half ago. And then a year in there, I had all this hard trouble and stuff, so I didn't get to get back. But what I found out today from y'all's employees, Mr. Rex, and is this Chris?
Oh, she's back there.
Chris is back there. Thank you. The answers about the shared driveway, and so they helped get me directed in the right way. And I just want to thank you all for having employees that will talk to the citizens when there's an issue. My issue was, I was told that the city controlled my driveway, my shared driveway, as he called it. And I had to get some clarification, and I came to the city and I gave it to you. And I'd just like to say thank you. It saved me a lot of steps. I've already seen the attorney this afternoon, said everything's ready, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Judd, Chris, for your work there and the staff. I know you go to a lot of board meetings, because I'll probably see you Wednesday morning. Thank you for your involvement in your city, and if you ever need any of the departments, that's what you expect. We've got a phenomenal team of leaders at the department head level and frontline staff level in the city, so their doors are always open to you.
Thank you.
Agenda item 5B, Chestnut Street, Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to give you a progress report on our Chestnut Street project, and to the stakeholders and property owners that we have here tonight. In July of last year, we met and gave a report on the entire project and recommended it be included in the budget, and it was. The takeaways from that meeting were that the council understood that we were headed in the direction of having concrete street sections, brick paver intersections, and we're going to do what we could feasibly to reuse the old bricks. So those were the primary points of that meeting. As I recall, the staff assessment was about $1.42 million, and the report said it included a contingency. So that's where we started. Progress since then are these bullet points. We hired a consultant, Berkhoff, Anderson, Carter. Probably the best move we made was to get him in here and really look at this and do it right, instead of us going to do that ourselves. We lab-tested the old bricks, as we said we would. They had about 90% strength compared to new bricks, which was impressive to us, but yet still, it's not our recommendation that we use all the bricks, but the ones that we do use, they have some strength, so that was good news. We further investigated accessibility standards. Presentation last year included changing up the street for its existing width without addressing the accessibility of intersections. That's the way that was presented. And as we dug into that, the more we realized that if we were violating rules, we were violating the spirit of the rules for accessibility, and we needed to do something about that, and we could do better. So that is a decision point that we had made to include more study in keeping all the requirements of the accessibility standards. We did receive cost estimates for the varying widths of the street. We looked at three different widths. We looked at a street profile design, and we selected the one, and you'll see why in just a minute, why we picked the one we did. The design drawings are currently 60% complete, and I'll talk more about the schedule at the end. The current right-of-way between buildings, property lines, is 8 feet. The existing street is 58 feet, which is much more width than what's needed. So we looked at three different options, 58-foot street with 12-foot sides, similar to what we have right now, 49-foot street and 44-foot street, with the last one being the really nice wide parkways. We looked at it with it being all paved, or with adding some green space and movable areas. And this is what we got back from the engineers. The budget included between $1.11,12 million for this year, and what the engineers' estimates included were improved intersections with matching our streetscape designs with pavers, with the waterline cost, and they included a 15% contingency as well. So for those street widths, you had with all paving, concrete on all the sides, the widths that I told you, either the 12, 15 and a half, or 18. And you have the higher numbers, and then if you have some grass sections included between the sidewalk and the back of the curb, you have the lower numbers. So right now, for the funds that we have in place, we're looking at a 44-foot street section in almost $1.45 million. One thing that's very attractive about the narrower street, it allows for a lot more landscaping, the tree wells, I've got some photos I'm going to show you in just a minute. But it also allows for changes as development continues to occur with access to utilities. And if we pave everything, go to full width, then we're going to have waterlines under the street, we're going to have, all our connection points are going to be under sidewalks. This will provide us an opportunity with the grass areas, even though there's maintenance costs involved, but there still can be access to utilities that we'll be able to do our work without harm in the street. So, bottom line, we need some additional funds, or we can look at bid alternatives. One of the bid alternatives that... One of the bid alternatives that really is getting the most attention is to not address the five-hundred block unless the funds are voted. The way we would do that would be just to include the same design standards for this block, and then it would be an alternate whether or not we had enough funds. We'll find enough where the bids come in. The engineers are concerned, most recently because of the weather economy, that the bidding environment is not as competitive as we would like. So they feel good about their numbers, but they're seeing, what they have seen in the past, with multiple bidders on the same jobs showing up at just one or two bidders. And so a lot of people are busy with a lot of work right now, is the message. This is a poor example, but it's pretty small, but basically you can see the eighty feet between the buildings, and you can see four lanes, two for parking, parallel parking, two driving lanes, twelve-foot driving lanes, ten-foot parking spaces, and then eighteen feet in between the curb and the buildings. This is just a typical intersection example that they showed to us, that they presented to us with the information this past week. Wanted to include that, but the colors show you the options for bricks. In the center, you would have, you could do a paring load pattern, you could do some kind of design at some expense, but usually there's concrete bordering it, and then you have the paved crosswalks, and then you have the green load edges between the sidewalks and the curb. The next, I've just got some photographs that the engineers thought would be interesting to this presentation. And this is photographs from Plano, and you can see the parking spaces on the sides, parallel with landscaping, available shrubs. The tree wells are there. You see two driving lanes, and then you can see the parking lane on the left. Here's the paved crosswalk section with the border with concrete interior towards the pavers on the inside of the intersection. Same here. Some of their intersections have the Plano with the star in the center for, actually have the city emblem. They have brick pavers next to the curb in some of their areas, and the profile of the curb we're pursuing is to have that be more of a grassy area and then have the sidewalk closer to the buildings is what we're looking at. One thing they have here, obviously, is underground drainage. We don't have that, and that's a big difference. We're going to have to let all that water flow down through there during the big rainstorms. It happened to be a day that they were trimming trees, so disregard the mess on the ground here, but there will be plenty of room in our parkways just for the things that you see, benches and tables and things like that. This shows you a lay-down section for a handicap area for accessibility to the sidewalk. They have some angle parking in these areas as well. This shows you an island away from the gutter that allows the water to run along the curb and gutter, but then it still captures, it separates the parking spots, provides a place for the fire hydrant, and has a landscaping alternate. Same here with a tree in the center and the benches. Here's a sample tree well. Doesn't look like it was done as well as some of the others, pavers instead of the four concrete curb. Somewhere the same. Project schedule, as I said, we're at sixty percent right now, and drawing to ninety percent first week of May. Looking at final plans for bidding a couple of weeks after that, and then they have to be submitted to the Texas Department of Licensing and Review for their review. Feel like we'll be ready to advertise the project late June, and we're at the construction first meeting in August. The construction period varies. Could be five to eight months if you pushed it. I put in a number nine there, and they've been saying with some of the coordination of other things downtown, that you might even give them more time than the nine months. Here's the challenges and the next steps. We're going to work on the details of the intersections. We're going to work on the details of the parkway strips, getting some basic elements in there. We'll work with the landowners. There's a lot of properties through here that have raised entrances, driveways. Part of the reason that you have such a difference in elevation is just so that the water will keep moving through. But the thing, by having the wider parkways, eighteen feet, you have a lot more room to make that transition up to an existing slab at the one to twelve slopes that are required for accessibility. We're going to see what we can do to keep store and reuse bricks. We've been working on that. That's a big challenge. One of the things that concerns us that we've been thinking about is maybe we could lift out a lot of the bricks in the apartment areas and store them. But if we did that, you could show contractors good faith during the bidding phase that we're going to do what we say we do, and some demolition ourselves to help realize some savings. Then if the bids come in high, we could be in a catch-22 with having already removed some of the bricks, and then we get bids that we can afford. So that's why we're getting as many alternatives in the documents as we can. As I said, we're going to identify alternatives, other ways to reduce cost, and we're looking for additional work. And we've got some ideas for that. Always checking with Renee, Judd has some ideas, but with that, I'd like for just opening up for questions.
For me personally, I did, the slide that showed the cars going in, parking in between trees or whatever, I don't know, for some reason I just go back to the old way Main Street used to be, and, you know, people didn't really like that, and didn't really care about that as much. I have concerns about some of the bench, you know, ideas of putting benches out there. I liked the one where it had just a little bit of the grass that was coming up by the fire hydrant area that looked nice like that, maybe just had some of those scattered in through there. Was it a fifty-thousand-dollar difference between that and going to the little bit narrower?
I think we were.
Thirty, yeah. Sorry, make it come back.
No, it's all right.
To the grass sides, it's one million four-hundred-and-eighty-seven. Go to forty-nine feet, it's going to be about sixty-seven.
Sixty-eight.
That just means five feet less or two and a half feet on both sides then?
Yeah, basically, you're going to fourteen-foot lanes instead of twelve-foot lanes is about all you're getting.
Does it make any difference if we go back and say we want to shift it over to what the forty-four, you know, the street width would be, you know, like it's closer on one side and we create more on the other side? Does that give us any extra abilities to do anything versus just splitting it down the middle?
Well, we'll have the property owners and their developability and usability that may be impacted by that. That's a big decision. If we, you know, we have places where you might, it's like they show that Plano's a place where there's angle parking versus parallel parking. You can make little movements like that based on some of the land, some of the uses of, some of these properties were from car dealerships, the way they were set up with big slopes going up into their buildings and things. And redevelopment is a real key to what this project needs to have in its plans, because the things that are there won't always be there, and however we can best make it attractive for redevelopment is key. So I don't know if juggling one side or the other, I don't know if there are a plan or we do have one on staff. Right, Judd?
I'd probably try to keep it equal on both sides, just so you've, and one of the benefits of having a more narrow street is that it's a natural traffic columnist, so as you're traveling, people aren't going to go as fast when there's not, I mean, a fifty-eight-foot street width now, it's like hit the accelerator, just head straight for the Snap Center for lunch. And, you know, the alternative is that you make a little more narrow street, it slows people down, and you have more room for sidewalks and outdoor dining and other things that really could help spur redevelopment in the future. So I like the forty-four feet. And that breaks down, David, correct me if I'm wrong, to twelve-foot travel lanes and then ten feet on the sides for parking, or however you kind of chop that up, but I think that the spec calls for twelve-foot travel lanes, which is still plenty of travel space.
David, you know why I was buying the street today? Just to give us a little perspective on what we're doing here.
The roadway is a hundred feet to begin with, so that's why we have the angle parking.
Street width.
Do you know the width between the two jut, pedestrian jut points is what I'm wondering about, but I bet it's more than twelve-foot lanes. Probably fifteen to sixteen, I would guess, on both sides. We certainly can, you know, there's a lot of work to be done. We're contacting all the property owners. We can deliver the report as we get more information. But now it was just to tell you where we were, what we've gotten accomplished, and give you a feel for it.
I appreciate the work. I know this has slowed down the process because of some of those things, so I think we need to do whatever it takes to get the five-hundred block down. Obviously, funding is an issue. We're already almost three-hundred thousand dollars over the budget of dollars there, but just begin stopping talking about it. Yes, sir.
We're talking about putting or shifting the lanes over. The north side of the road, ninety percent of the north side of the road is parking already. So you're not affecting, the landscaping and everything would be better on that side since you already have parking lots. You're gaining more parking from the city lots. And put your grassy area or whatever on the north side of the road. So shifting the road really makes sense.
The road's currently going to be centered, correct? And you're proposing what offset?
Shift it to the south and put the wider lanes on the north side, which is mainly parking lots anyways, up and down that street. And most of those parking lots are owned by the city.
Well, a lot of those lots are twenty-five-foot lots, and it's hard for us to imagine redevelopment taking place at a twenty-five-foot lot level, but it can happen. And those parking lots can be redevelopment lots, either at twenty-five-foot widths or thirty-seven and a half, or fifty-foot lot developments. And I just, long-term, to get the fuller redevelopment potential, I just think you've got to try to keep the road in the center. We'll look at it, but it's a bigger question.
Yes, we need parking in downtown. And when you come to the events that are downtown or the football games, there's no parking. You need the parking lots. So the more parking you can develop for our fairs and our events that we're having, I mean, there are people all parking two miles away just to get here because they have no place to park, so.
Thanks, sir. Anything else? So David, you'll just continue to explore that concept there with the engineers?
So I guess feeding in on that B, if we're talking about having parallel parking on the south side and parking at similar to Main Street, diagonal parking on the north side, which effectively shifts that down to the south.
I think we'd have to go to wider street width in order to make that happen.
So we couldn't get rid of it with that? Okay, David, beautiful. Forty-nine footer, forty-eight. Is that, are those going to be when you bid this out? Are you going to bid it one way to forty-four?
Yes, sir.
David, is brick stamp, is that an alternative?
We have, we've looked at new bricks right now, just for the long-term wear. The concrete design underneath is the same street profile as above. They just lowered the street about two and a half inches, maybe three, so the bricks can sit right there. They're bound with curving all the way around. It's a real tight design and really works well. The stamping can work, and I guess we could look at that as an alternative.
I just recall from July, the Snap's recommendation was to do stamping, and the council said to use, go ahead at that point, go with the additional expense to use pavers. And now that we're three-hundred thousand dollars over, but I don't remember what the difference was, but I could be wrong on my recollection, but I thought Snap's recommendation was stamping the cost.
I think the cost wasn't, there wasn't too big a difference between stamps and the, yeah. It wasn't much, so, you know, we'll look at the, we'll look at the pavers, especially reusing the bricks that are there now in the burnet intersection.
Just, I mean, I'm all for whatever you guys and engineers think, maybe the bid packet for alternative bids, I just posed up, because I think the top is what we reported July. I know the council said to go with the.
One thing for the five-hundred block that we've talked about was, after the waterline work is done, which it has to be done, is the possibility of building and relaying new asphalt in the five-hundred block anyway. So at least it would get a treatment, it wouldn't have the cuts anymore, and it would go new would be one alternative opposed to doing old concrete.
Anything else? The water lines, would it be, you know, the proposed grass that you were showing a while ago, would that be positioned underneath that grass area, or would it be, is that we relocate them to?
When we put in the new water lines, we intend to have the access that we need in the grass area.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, council now going to executive session, we're searching chapter five-five-one versus government code. Talking about public location, and also discuss the city's bargaining position and real property. Time is six forty-seven. We're going to executive session.